The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I'd like to call it a order, this meeting of the Royal Palm Beach Village Council for June 5th, 2025. If everyone will please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, would you let the record reflect that all council members are physically present except for the mayor who is with us over the airwaves? Can you hear me, Mayor?
He's self-muted.
Apparently you're self-muted. Can I hear you, Jeff? A sense that you're here? I guess not. We'll move on at this point.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I will.
When you have a chance, Jeff, please speak up and let us know that you're hearing us and engaging. Thank you. And next item of business is a proclamation for National League of Cities declaring June 2025 as Small Cities Month. Proclamation: Whereas small cities and towns under fifty thousand in population are the home to millions of Americans and constitute the vast majority of municipalities across the United States, and whereas small cities and towns strive to strengthen their communities through the provision of services and programs to improve the quality of life for all citizens, and whereas the federal government is an essential partner in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support programs and legislation that strengthen small communities, and whereas state governments are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to support key programs and legislation that strengthen communities, and whereas organization businesses, bless you, and citizens are partners in the success of small cities and towns and must be encouraged to continue to grow their efforts to make small communities a viable choice for people to live in, and whereas during these challenging economic times, the need for a renewed intergovernmental partnership to support essential public services is more important than ever to ensure the safety and growth of small-town America, and whereas the National League of Cities President and the Small Cities Council of the National League of Cities have declared June 2025 as Small Cities Month. Now, therefore, on behalf of the citizens and council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, I, Richard Voluntas for Mayor Jeff Hamara, hereby proclaim June 2025 as Small Cities Month and encourage President Trump, Congress, state governments, organizations, businesses, and all citizens to recognize this event and to work together this month and throughout the year to invest in small cities and towns to better the lives of all citizens.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now, Jeff.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, well, next item on, bonjour. Next item on the agenda is the reports, and I will go with first to the mayor, who is up a lot later than the rest of us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate it. And I will tell you that this is an interesting experience, and it seemed like a really good idea at the time. This is actually our first day of using on the Seine River, but we've already had four days in Paris. And I will tell you that there is a lot of effort here in Paris directed towards sustainability, and it's an initiative that's been in place now for about five years by the mayor, who is experiencing both a love and a hate response, as she continues to try to find ways to encourage people to use transportation modes other than cars by doing things like shutting down roadways, either for a period of time or completely making them pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly areas. The jury is still out on whether or not those are going to be significantly positive, but I can tell you from driving and riding around in traffic, it looks like it has a ways to go here in Paris. I'm looking forward to tomorrow as we arrive at a medieval city of Muron, but then the next day we will actually be in the heart of Normandy and get to the opportunity to actually physically be in the area of E-Day Operation, eighty-one years after that operation actually took place on June 6th, 1944. It's going to be, I'm sure, a very emotional experience, as well as a very informative experience. And it's impressive to see how the French respond to and remember that very historical event. So we're looking forward to a journey that actually will give us more things to share with you all when we get back. So I won't take up any more of your time. I know you have an agenda tonight. And this is kind of one for the books, as they say. That completes my report.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for staying up late to join us. I'll continue reports with Councilwoman Ruduski.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. First, I want to start by thanking the village team and everyone who took part in organizing and executing just a lovely Memorial Day celebration. I think it was one of the best we've ever had. It was beautiful. We have a slew of events coming up for our community. First, tomorrow is Prom Night for Young at Heart from four to seven at the Cultural Center. And then, if that's not your speed and you want a little more fired up, we have Food Truck Expo and Concert at Commons Park tomorrow night, a tribute band to, a tribute to Pat Benatar and her music. Always fun.
Fired up.
Yeah. And then on June 19th, the village offices and post office will be closed in honor and observance of Juneteenth. And then there will be another celebration of Juneteenth on Friday, the 20th, Commons Park with soul food and performances by N2 Nation, featuring great hits of Motown and the 60s. And then we have a community band concert coming up on June 24th at seven in the Cultural Center with Refreshments. And then, very exciting, we have the unveiling of our new public art piece, Rooted, on Monday, the 30th, beginning at 4:00 PM with Refreshments. And we've got all our Fourth of July celebration, but I will leave it at that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I'll have a short report today, tonight. First, I want to recognize and thank all of our teachers, administrators, and support staff out there in Royal Palm Beach and beyond. We've just finished another great school year, and thank you for your service and dedication, and I hope you guys enjoy your summer off. I'd also like to recognize the staff, as Councilwoman Ruduski did, and everyone who made Memorial Day the event such a wonderful event. And since I am focused on helping my fellow council people become better with technology at my AI tip of the month, so I'm going to share with you how I stay organized with AI. So I've been using AI ChatGPT specifically like a personal assistant. It helps me stay organized throughout the month and throughout the year. So I just take quick notes when I'm in a meeting, I'm at an event, whatever, on a Google Doc, and I keep ongoing running Google Doc. And then when I want, I can, I didn't do it for this month, but I could drop into ChatGPT and ask it to, you know, organize my notes by topic, create to-do lists or summarize it, and summarize everything, like, for example, about parks or code enforcement, and it could give me clean, usable talking points I could use for my report. Just make sure, make sure I keep track of everything I could do for the whole year, and I do encourage my fellow council people to use ChatGPT that way. This makes it a lot easier than doing everything manually. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Charps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Hello to all my fellow council members, now attorney, village clerk, village manager, and the mayor that is in Paris. Please bring me back a rock. I collect rocks. Make it an interesting one. My most exciting thing is this weekend I will be at the Institute for Elected Municipal Officials in Boca Raton, attending their class for council persons and commissioners. And I'm really looking forward to it. I'm really excited about it. It's Friday and Saturday. So I will come back, and I will be full of knowledge, and my head will be a little big. So you'll have to give me a minute, you know, while I expound on the knowledge I will be claiming about. And of course, ditto with Jan's announcements. I'll beat all of those. We've got four or five different Juneteenth events. Ain't even one through my nonprofit with my domestic violence survivors. So that's my report.
Thank you. And the only reports I have are kind of to piggyback on what Jan said. I thought we did have a fabulous Memorial Day service. And the community band, I saw them in concert last month, and they were phenomenal, and they're going to be back again on Memorial Day. So I really appreciated their hard work. It was hot out there, and they were still belting out the tunes and doing really well. And I'd like to, special thanks to the mayor, because I thought he gave a really excellent speech, and it spoke to me. I know we hear a lot of speeches, and I appreciate it, all the people who did present, but what the mayor said really resonated. So thank you so much, Mayor, for the heartfelt speech that you gave. And that's the end of my reports. Village Manager, do we have anything?
I just have one thing. Next Tuesday, September, or June 10th, at the Palm Beach County Commission meeting, they will be awarding the countywide transportation master plan contract to a consultant that will be charged with helping the county and all the cities and all the different neighborhood groups to come together and create a, hopefully, a plan that we could, a future transportation plan that we can all agree on, along with FDOT, the DPA, and everybody else involved. So it's a really excellent effort that the county had put together and funded, and their method in including everybody in this has been, to date, so far, has worked really well, and we hope to see it continue that way.
Is this a meeting that we should make sure we have representation here, either from staff or council or both?
I was on the selection committee, so they did ask me to be there, so I'll be there if they have any comments, questions. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Middy, anything from?
Vice Mayor, other than it's nice to be with you tonight.
It's great to have you here. Thank you. The next issue on the agenda is petitions. Diane, do we have any petitions?
No petitions, Vice Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience have a petition to present the council? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is statements from the public on non-agenda items or consent agenda items. Diane, do we have any cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Ray, do we have any?
No hands, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
No hands raised. Okay, so anyone in the audience wish to come and make a comment on anything not on the agenda or on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the next agenda, next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Diane?
Thank you again, Vice Mayor. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council workshop meeting of May 8th, 2025, and council regular meeting of May 15th, 2025. Two, approval of a special event permit for the Village of Royal Palm Beach to hold its annual Star Spaniel Spectacular at Royal Palm Beach Commons on Friday, July 4th, 2025, from 3:00 PM until 10:00 PM. Three, approval and authorization, authorization in accordance with established policy for the making of a budget amendment for Fund 303 in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $110,685 from Fund 303 undesignated fund balance to lighting upgrade at Bob Marcella Park PR 2501. Four, approval of the bid award in the amount of $302,562.93, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive responsible bidder for lighting upgraded Village Sports Fields Project PR 2501 to Davco Electrical Contractors Corporation. Five, approval of the bid award in the amount of $357,113, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract for materials for the lighting upgrade Village Sports Field Project PR 2501 to Musco Sports Lighting. Six, approval of a bid award in the amount not to exceed $100,000, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive responsible bidder for annual carnival ride services to Florida Carnival and More Incorporated. Seven, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into a professional services agreement for electrical engineering services with Cape Design Engineering Company for various projects in the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Eight, adoption of resolution number 2519, a resolution of the village council of the Village of Royal Palm Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing in accordance with established policy the making of a budget amendment for Fund 401 in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $75,000 from Fund 304 undesignated fund balance to WTP Site Modification PW1902. Nine, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute change order number one with Total Wrecking and Environmental LLC for the Water Treatment Plant Site Modification PW1902 to increase the amount of the contract by $74,000.
Thank you very much, Diane. Are there any items on the consent agenda anyone from the council would like to have pulled for discussion?
Yes, item number six, please.
Okay, six. Mr. Mayor, is there anything on the agenda that you would like, or consent agenda, that you would like to have pulled for discussion?
No, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So do I have a motion with regard to the rest of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through five and seven, eight, nine.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve all items on the consent agenda except for item six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So Councilman Miller, we have six, item number six for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just wanted to bring up this item. This is the annual carnival ride services with, this is the same company we were using last year, and we enjoy the rides and everything. I do remember Westfest, I believe it was the first night of Westfest, the carnival company packed up about thirty minutes early and drove out. It was a safety issue, and I just wanted to chat about that with the village council and the mayor, I'm sorry, village manager, about that, because I'm concerned I want to make sure that doesn't happen again in the future.
So it is within, in the RFP and in the contract, we do designate the times, and they are, they have to abide by those times.
And if they don't, what happens?
They're in violation of their contract. It's something that we will have a conversation with them and tell them that, you know, these are the times, and they need to, they need to abide by those times, and we have people out there.
Okay, is there anything in the contract that allows us to recoup something if that happens again, or?
No, there's nothing specific in there about doing that. We would deal with it if it happens.
Okay, I'm mainly concerned about the safety issue, right? So, you know, so whatever we can do to make sure that doesn't happen, I would appreciate that.
And the safety, the safety issue is that the ride was left unattended, but the--
No, no, they packed up early and they drove out while there's families and kids still running around.
Okay, why they--
There weren't many, there weren't many. It was dying down.
It was the driving out, okay.
Yeah, the company that runs it, the Pirates Company, they tried to stop them. They stopped them, I think, further up, closer to the building, but--
Mark will have a conversation with them, and we will, and it is in the contract for them to abide by those times, and that will be a problem if they don't.
Thank you.
To piggyback on Councilman Miller's comments is, you know, we're paying for a service, and I think, you know, we should get what we paid for. So, but yeah, the safety issue is paramount. You don't want heavy equipment being moved in and out when there's, when there's families and children being moved. Any other comments from council, Jan?
No, I agree with, I agree with that. I didn't know that that had happened, and that is a concern.
Sylvia?
No, good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, any comments?
No, thank you. Well, beyond having seen it myself, and I think the contractor was already told about it, but certainly if that happened again, there'd probably be something more than just a comment from us would be warranted. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, then I'll close comments on item number six on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept the item six that was pulled originally and is now back on the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item number six on the consent agenda has passed. Now we move to the regular agenda, which tonight we have the presentation of the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, District Nine, Annual Report by Captain Ulrich Nyox. It says village manager, but I'll go straight to the captain unless Ray has some comments to add, or I want to hear from the guy, but--
Mayor, council members, village manager, I thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to once again present the District Nine Village Royal Palm Beach Annual Report to you. I think this will be maybe my tenth or eleventh that I've been here. Well, I came out here in 2013 as a lieutenant, and I got promoted to captain in 2017, so 2017 till today, and if I'm fortunate enough to stay in District Nine, I'll have three more of these to do with you until I turn the reins over to someone else. That being said, I am very proud to be here in front of you guys. I'm a very proud resident of the village. I have been with my family since 2001, and hopefully we can keep things moving forward in a forward, positive direction. All right, moving forward, our first slide is community outreach. At District Nine, we believe in the importance of community involvement. As such, some of the activities we were involved in include holiday event at the Kids Cancer Foundation, annual principal and clergy breakfast, which the village manager always attends, the bike helmet program, crime prevention in communities, shop with a cop, business partnership program, conversation with a deputy, as well as career day. There are also many others that we attend, and we've attached some photos here to see. Some of these are food drives, some of the other things are things that happen throughout the year. Moving on to our next slide, city observer patrol, COP. In 2024, District Nine COP volunteers provided 576 volunteer hours to operations within District Nine. The value of this patrol, F calculated minimum wage equals $18,207.36. These hours included 1,656 patrol miles, 419 park patrols, and 141 business checks. Our support statistics for divisions outside of PBSO, as well as some assigned to District Nine. District Nine is, as you know, one of the four designated areas in the county that provides fingerprinting. In 2024, District Nine processed 1,381 requests for fingerprinting services. The mounted unit provided 20 hours of horseback patrol in the village. Bicycle equipped deputies provided 44 hours of patrol time. Marine certified deputies provided 54 hours of marine patrol, and our deputies processed over 210 pounds of unwanted prescriptions that were dropped off the district. Calls for service or CADs. Calls for service are the number of calls received from the community. Our computer aided dispatch system, known as CADs, captured a total of 129,313 incidents last year. Of those, 108,361 were proactive calls, such as business or residence checks, traffic stops, assistance to motor vehicle drivers, et cetera. The remaining 20,952 were law enforcement calls for service. Please note there were 707 less calls for service in 2024 than there were in 2023. Calls for service decreased by 3.3%. Now for what I like to refer to as the meat and potatoes of my presentation, the UCR, the Uniform Crime Report. This measures the crime rate per 100,000 individuals. It does so by recording crime in seven major crime categories. Those numbers are then compared to the previous year's numbers to determine an increase or decrease in the crime rate. The seven categories used are, number one, murder, there were none in the village in 2024. Forcible rape, also known as sexual battery, there were ten sexual battery cases investigated in 2023 and twelve in 2024, an increase of 20%. Robbery, there were nine in 2023 and eight in 2024, a decrease of 11.1%. Aggravated assault, there were 72 in 2023 and 43 in 2024, a decrease of 40.3%. Burglary, there were 60 in 2023 and 21 in 2024, a decrease of 65%. Larceny, including auto burglary, there were 423 in 2023 and 542 in 2024, an increase of 28.1%. Motor vehicle theft, there were 21 in 2023 and 23 in 2024, a 9.5% increase. Our clearance rate for the seven categories listed above rose from 32.9 in 2023 to 37.8 in 2024, for an increase in clearance rate of 4.9%. That being said, the changes detailed above caused the total crime index to rise from 596 in 2023 to 649 in 2024. This resulted in a crime rate increase of 8.9%. In a moment, I'll elaborate on some of the crimes so you have a better idea of the circumstances involving them. What I did here for your review for your edification is a breakdown of the past 10 years of our total crime index, so you can see that although we've had a little rise from 2023, 2022, and 2021, altogether, it remains lower than it was in previous years, from 984 in 2014 to 649 now. Robbery incidents. Of the previously mentioned eight robberies, five people were arrested in four of those robbery cases. Two of the cases were related to online purchases of clothing. Two cases involved a business. One victim refused to prosecute. One was acquaintance domestic related. One occurred making, after making an ATM withdrawal, and one occurred while a juvenile was riding a bicycle on his way home. Larceny incidents. There were 423 reported larcenies in 2023 and 542 in 2024, an increase of 28.1% as previously mentioned. Of the 542 larcenies, 337 were shoplifting cases. Shoplifting increased 84.2% and was a major cause for the crime, excuse me, for the rise in the total crime index crime rate. Out of the shoplifting incidents, 124 occurred at Target, 85 at Walmart, 17 at Lowe's, nine at Costco, and six at BJ's. These shoplifting cases accounted for 62.17% of all larceny incidents. Larceny incidents also included vehicle burglaries, which I will detail shortly. Burglary incidents, and this one is always very important to everybody, myself included, being a village resident. It has to do with the sanctity and privacy of your home, so it's always nice to see when these numbers go down. And that being said, residential burglaries in 2023, there were 12 in 2023. That being said, residential burglaries in 2023, there were 12, in 2024, there were nine. This resulted in a 20% decrease in this category, and business burglaries decreased 70% from 37 in 2023 to 11 in 2024. Vehicle burglary and auto theft incidents, there were 99 vehicle burglaries in 2023 and 81 in 2024, a decrease of 18%. Arrests were made in 19 of those cases. Vehicle burglaries accounted for 81 of the 542 reported larcenies. Of those 81 vehicle burglaries, 58 or 71.6% were the vehicles that were left unlocked. Eleven firearms were taken in burglaries to those unlocked vehicles. Additionally, there were 21 auto thefts in 2023 and 23 in 2024, an increase of 9.5%. Of those 23 thefts, seven or 30.43 involved keys that were left in the vehicle. Of the auto thefts, some were acquaintance-related or stemmed from reports filed by dealerships or car rental agencies. Some even involve golf carts and mopeds or other motor vehicles, as those are classified by FDLE and UCR's motor vehicles. Twelve, traffic. The top three traffic clash, crash locations in village were determined to be State Road Eighty and US 441, which had 98 crashes or seven less crashes in 2024 than 2023, for a decrease of 6.7%. State Road Eighty and Crestwood Boulevard, which had 80 crashes or six more crashes in 2024 than 2023, for an increase of 8.1%. Okeechobee Boulevard and State Road Seven had 67 or 12 more crashes in 2024 than 2023, for an increase of 21.8%. Overall, we had 1,467 crashes in 2024, 37 more than 2023, or a 3% increase. Deputies issued 6,638 traffic citations, which was up 35% in 2023, and 14,294 warnings, which was a 20% increase from 2023. Deputies also made 34 DUI arrests. Our street crimes unit, the unit consists of four deputies and one sergeant. I'm sure you guys are familiar with them, you'll see them around on the Fourth of July and our other major events. They're utilized for crime suppression, problem solving, and support for road patrol. In 2024, the street crimes unit made 211 arrests, resulting in 112 felony and 85 misdemeanor charges. They also made 29 warrant arrests. They conducted 841 traffic stops, issued 178 citations, 629 warnings, and completed 84 field interview reports. Additionally, they authored and executed 10 search warrants and assisted with an additional 10 search warrants. Our detectives, together, they were assigned a total of 259 cases and made 51 arrests. They had a case clearance rate of 61.1%. Our LPR cameras, which is a gift that just keeps on giving, and once again, I like to reiterate my, my thankfulness to the village, it's been a great tool for us. It was used to detect 163 vehicles in 2024 that were either stolen or used in other crimes, both inside and outside of the village. This resulted in 36 arrests and 15 recovered stolen vehicles. As we do and, and have done in years past, my staff at my direction sends out equality surveys, a means by which to measure the public satisfaction with our services. This year, once again, we mailed out, um, randomly, uh, 480 satisfaction surveys to people who had a, uh, encounter with us. Of those, only 41 people responded, of those, 93% rated as excellent, and 7% rated as good. And our 2025 goals, to sum it up, um, crime reduction, traffic safety, and obedience to traffic laws remain of paramount importance to us, as I'm sure you all sitting behind the dais, know, traffic complaints about speeding and running, running red lights and so on are the number one complaint, I'm sure you all receive, and it is in my office as well. So in summation, in 2025, the District Nine deputies will continue to do what they always have done, which is ensure the Village of Royal Palm Beach remains a safe place for residents, visitors, and businesses alike. And with that being said, I'll conclude my presentation. Open floor to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Captain. I guess I will start off with, um, first of all, thank you for the presentation and things I like to see. Murder down, I like seeing no murders, that, that's excellent, robbery down as well, and DUI, which isn't often considered a serious crime, but that can have tragic consequences, so that, uh, going down well, I think is, is impressive. I noticed the, the larceny had gone up quite a bit, and it didn't reflect in the numbers as this, uh, function of, because the vast majority of larcenies are, like you said, at the retail stores, at Target, at Walmart, are we just seeing more of them, or more prosecution of them, or them being more involved with you guys and, and pushing these cases forward? Or what's the explanation of it, I guess, is what I'm asking?
What we had in one specific incident was, um, an instance where the loss prevention officers were not receiving authorization from their corporate office to make reports in a timely manner. So in looking back at video of things that had happened, had to wait to get authority and approval before they could go ahead and make those, so a lot of those were delayed reports. As you can imagine, when you have a delayed report, you can't make an immediate arrest or conduct an immediate investigation, therefore you allow the criminal to go forward and, and create crimes in, in other places, or come back and do it again in this one. That specific store, which I'm, I'm speaking about along with others, um, we met with them several times, and finally, they, they reimagined the way they were dealing with this, and as of this moment, we've had much better success with them reporting in a timely manner, and, uh, we're hoping that moving forward, it will address some of the problems. The larcenies that we have, and, and as you noted, the increase was mostly due to shoplifting.
Okay, and, and so it was due to shoplifting?
Yes.
And reporting in a timely manner is actually, you know, bad from the fact that, hey, we've got more larcenies, but it's good from the fact that, hey, we're working together and we're actually getting on to them and prosecuting or tracking them, or, I, I mean, it's not going to be a situation where the person's gone or things have gone cold, correct?
Right, and, and there was a paradigm shift in the way stores, especially retail stores, dealt with shoplifters from when I first started this job till now, because when I first did, they were hands-on, they would make immediate apprehensions, they would hold if people resisted, they would, you know, offer counter resistance, and they would hold people till the sheriff's office got there. That unfortunately proved to be very, um, expensive for them, resulting from civil litigation. So as a result, they reimagine it and readdress the way they do things now, and it's, it's a different way that we do things, but we still go forward.
Okay, and the last two questions I have, um, are on traffic, I'm sure other council members have gotten, uh, questions. Number one, the number one I've gotten at least is the, uh, the traffic situation around HL Johnson and people blocking roadways and parking, I know that there were signs put up. Have we seen a lessening of that problem, or are you aware of, because I, I, I know that I've seen, they're saying, oh, the police have come out, but then they'll go away, and that's always the complaint, because you can't be there 24/7, but, um, have you seen, uh, I guess, an, an increase in the compliance with parents dropping off their kids at HL Johnson, and less traffic problems, because the last thing we want is, you know, a kid or someone having an accident by the school?
The problem that HL Johnson had been redundant throughout the years, they usually manifest themselves right at the beginning of school year, when incoming parents have to learn what the traffic pattern is, and once they adapt and adjust, then it becomes less problematic as the years go on. More recently, we had a problem with people parking and blocking the road of La Mancha, the village manager, um, Chris Marsh and I, we, we discussed it, and they put up signs. I haven't heard any complaints since those signs were implemented.
Right.
So hopefully that addressed the problem, we'll see as we go forward.
Okay, and the final one is, heard this through, uh, election season, speeding on a, on Crestwood north of, uh, Okeechobee, and I guess, heading all the way to, uh, Royal Palm Beach Boulevard, have we seen increase, decrease? What's your, I guess, evaluation of the situation? Because I know we put up the speed things to let people know, hey, you're going a little bit too fast, slow down, um...
I, I will tell you, from having gone out with some of the motor units when they do traffic enforcement, quite often, perception isn't necessarily reality.
Okay.
Now, not to say that people don't believe they see speeding there.
They do speed, I bet, yeah.
You know, I, I was sitting next to some of these deputies, I'm like, wow, this, this person must be speeding, and look at the radar, and they just weren't. And I, I think that might be some of the problem on Crestwood. Not to say that people don't occasionally speed, but I don't think it's that big of a problem, I mean, I've directed deputies out there, I've put signs up, and my deputies are coming back, just not writing the volume of tickets that would match the volume of complaints that we sometimes see, if that makes any sense.
Yep. Thanks so much. Uh, next I'll go to Mr. Mayor in parts unknown, uh, do you have any questions for the captain?
Uh, no, I don't accept to just follow up with the statement about the Crestwood Boulevard speeding perception, uh, to say that I think one of the things that we decided during strategic planning was to, uh, actually have a mechanical or electronic measurement done so that we know what ground truth is on the speeds and, and how they break out insofar as, uh, what is the average and what's the 80 percentile and, and that type of thing, so as to get to a, a valid, uh, statement about speeding, whether or not it's truly the problem that's perceived by a number of people. I don't think we've received the results yet, maybe the village manager knows the latest on that. That's my only comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Harps?
Thank you so much for all the hard work that you and the rest of the officers do. Again, I just really want to reiterate, I live right here on Sparrow Drive. Please, my driveway is exceedingly large, if you could send someone to sit there, they can write tickets to time get better, seriously. I mean, in the evening, it, it's like roadway raceway, and I, you know, I'm not exaggerating, I'm serious.
Sure.
I even had a, a golf cart speeding and racing a motorcycle, I, I don't understand, I just don't get it.
Sure.
But, and I know the sign is there that says, you know, that monitors your speed, and it, it immediately says, too fast, too fast, but it's really not helping, but my yard is open, if they want to park there, I'm telling you, I'll even give them cookies and, and, and coffee.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all? Councilwoman Reddaski?
Hey, thank you, Captain, for this, very thorough every year, and I want to commend you and your team on, um, just everything you do. It's just, not only you fighting crimes, but you're out there having all these outreach community touchpoints and, and really, um, activating the community. Congratulations on increasing your, um, clearance rate, too, that's, that's amazing. Uh, I did have the pleasure last year of, um, shopping with a cop, and it was such a good experience to have, um, these small children who typically don't interface with the police officers or have a, a preconceived idea about what, um, a police officer will, how they will react or how they will treat them, and it was just so sweet, um, it was a really good experience, so just say, keep up the good work and all the great things that you guys do.
Councilman Miller?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Captain, thank you, to you and your team, um, my family, we feel very safe here in Royal Palm Beach. Everyone I speak to says the same thing, I mean, there's always isolated incidents, of course, but you and your team do an amazing job, um, you know, amazing on the crime index being down over 10 years, I mean, just great work. Um, I do want to share one story, um, uh, that recognizes your team and how great they are. Uh, at Westfest this year, one of the evenings, um, I was walking around in the crowd, and I had my Royal Palm Beach Village shirt on, and a mom came up frantic to me that she lost her child. We were, I was able to quickly take her over to one of your deputies, quickly got a description of the child, and there was another set of deputies, hundred feet away, hun, a hundred yards away, that already locates, noticed the child that was by himself, went and approached the child, made him feel comfortable, and they were able to find him within two minutes and make the mom feel much better, so I just want to recognize, might get their names, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
If you don't have any other comments, Captain, thank you very much for your report, we really appreciate the hard work you guys do, and, uh, keep it up, because as Councilman Miller said, I, I, I feel safe in our community, and I think the majority of the residents do as well, and that's because of you guys, so keep it up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, looks like that's the last item on the agenda, so if anyone doesn't have anything else, meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you. Very good, Mr. Vice.